So, we have the.
Council will call the meeting order for the record. It is October 11th, 2022 at 4:32 PM. We will begin this afternoon's work session with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilman Burton.
Here.
Councilwoman Perro.
Here.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Here.
Councilman Borton.
Here.
Mayor Simpson.
Here. Next item is adoption of the agenda. Councilman Borton.
There are no changes to the agenda. No changes to the agenda. I move that we approve the agenda as published.
I have a motion of second to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor, say five by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. The ayes have it and the agenda is agreed to. Next up is the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
Move that we approve the consent agenda as published for the mayor to sign and clerk to attest.
I have a motion of second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor, say five by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. The ayes have it and the consent agenda is agreed to. There were no items moved from the consent agenda, so we will move on to item 10, which is Department Commissioning Reports. First item up is a proclamation for Cyber Security Awareness Month. The TD would join me at the podium.
Thank you, Dave, for helping us do this. And it's always great to come down and talk about the importance of cybersecurity, both for our residents, for our employees, and for the community. Well, I guess that is the residents, but our community at large on businesses on this important topic. So I'll just go ahead and read a proclamation and turn this over to you for some comments after that. Whereas the City of Marion recognizes it has a vital role in identifying, protecting its citizens from and responding to cybersecurity threats that may have significant impact to our community. And whereas cybersecurity education and awareness is crucial for everyone, including large corporations, small businesses, financial institutions, schools, government agencies, the home user, and anyone who connects to the internet. And whereas you can protect yourself by monitoring your accounts, being conscientious of what you share online, keeping computer software up to date, using strong passwords, enabling multi-factor authentication, recognizing reporting phishing, and using mobile devices safely. And whereas you see yourself in cyber campaigns, serves as the National Cyber Security Public Winners Campaign implemented through a coalition working together to increase the public's understanding of cyber threats and empowering Americans to be safe and secure online. And whereas maintaining the security of cyberspace is a shared responsibility in which each of us has a critical role to play, and awareness of computer security essentials will improve the security of the City of Marion's information, infrastructure, and economy. Therefore, I, Mayor Robert Simpson, hereby proclaim the month of October 22nd as Cyber Security Awareness Month in the City of Marion and call upon the community to join me in recognizing how serious cybersecurity is and the steps each of us can take to protect ourselves and our community. So on behalf of myself and council, Dave, here's a proclamation for you and your team to help memorialize the efforts that you all take in upstairs and the larger efforts that are taking in the community from there. So if we can do a quick picture, then I'll let you speak.
Just say a couple of words here. Cybersecurity affects all of us, whether at work, at school, at play, or at home. Cybersecurity Awareness Month. Every October is a collaboration between government and private industry to raise awareness about digital information security and empowering everyone to protect their own personal information from digital forms of crime. A lot of cybersecurity awareness articles out there today are about data breaches, ransomware, and other things that are pretty scary to us. So it can feel pretty overwhelming and you can feel kind of powerless against all the things that are stacked up against you. But this month is an opportunity to remind everyone that it is, there are lots of ways to protect your data, your information, and it's easy to do. You can make a huge difference by just following some good practices or basics of cybersecurity. So both the National Cybersecurity Alliance and the Cybersecurity and Infrastructure Security Agency have some great resources available online that I invite you to check out at CISA.gov and staysafeonline.org. And with that, thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Thank you to you and your team. And even though I told Laura why to start working with you, council, you'll probably be having a budget amendment coming, something that we talked about doing with ARPA that we didn't for SCADA to improve our security. So just a good opportunity to make the initial plug with that, but the Public Works liaison and IT liaison will be having a conversation appropriately in the near future and then council after that. So, right. Thanks, Dave. Next item up is item 11, which is the pill of denial of MSU 2022-0097.
I can start that, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Nary.
Oh, Mr. Members of the council, we probably need to change the terminology for these reviews. This is really a council review. So when a license is denied, the applicant has the opportunity to request review of that. Really what is being looked at in an application is the person's prior record. If you recall, about a year ago, we actually lowered some of the years of disqualification for certain offenses. And so we took them from five, from 10 years to five years and things like that. So we worked with the police department on what made sense. But what we're looking for is, is this the person? Did we follow the process? Is there a disqualifying record? In this case, with Mr. Simons, there is. In the packet, he provided us information about a recent charge in the last year of a paraphernalia case that was dismissed. That wasn't the basis of the denial. The denial was based on one that was about four and a half years ago. So he will be eligible in the next, what was it? Yeah, February. Have I eligible by February of '23 if he receives no other criminal convictions to reapply, but he isn't eligible now. So I think he was under a misimpression that his denial was based on the dismissed case, but it was actually denied based on an older case. But it is him. We did verify the records. Lieutenant Harper does that. He did communicate that to Mr. Simons, which may be why he's not here. So.
Lieutenant, anything to add to Mr. Nary's comments? I've got a no, sir. So with that, council, do you have enough information to make a motion?
Yeah, I think so. Just a motion to deny the request.
Even though it shouldn't really be a request denial, but a review?
Yeah, either, yeah. I think the terminology that's still in the code is appeal.
Okay.
So it would be a request, it would be a motion to deny the appeal.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
Based on the information on record and remarks of council, move that we deny the appeal/review,
I have a motion of second to deny the appeal. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor, say five by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. The ayes have it and the motion is approved.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
A quick comment on that to Legals' remarks. The use of the word appeal is a problem for those instances like this where the role of council, if they've, if they've met or not met whatever requirements or in code, if eliminating the appeal process or doing something to, it just doesn't make sense. It come, I don't like it when they come to us feeling as if we have discretion on some subjective basis to grant the relief. We might want to, but we can't. So maybe for another day, those, maybe this is the only one.
Well, Mr. Member. Councilman Borton, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. We have had this conversation a number of times in my office and, and the struggle that we have, and again, I don't know, is it is very uncommon in the city for the staff level to review to be the final say in whatever the decision is. And that either the mayor or the council always gets one more review of it to make sure the process was followed. Now, we've narrowed the scope of them in many cases. The one I can think of that we haven't had in a long time is the Board of Adjustment. And we've narrowed what is actually reviewed. But I mean, even in these cases, you know, Lieutenant Harper and Lieutenant, the tenants before him always communicated the same thing to the applicant. Here's why you're disqualified. Here's the code. They can't waive it. So, you know, yes, we probably should, at the minimum, we're going to leave some type of due process review, make it very clear what it is and that it's not an appeal and that it really is reviewing that we did the right thing. Because if you recall, we've only had one person who had a case that was expunged and we then granted him the license. And we said, if you'd given it to us beforehand, we'd have done it before we got here. So, I mean, we do try to address this, but that's really our dilemma, is that it's so uncommon for staff to be the last word on any particular topic. That's the reason.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Strater.
I guess a question for legal. I mean, do we need to word it as an appeal of denial? Could we say council review of basis of denial or something that makes it more clear that it's not like anyone can appeal for any reason? That might help. Just if even the verbiage on the agenda was changed, I think it might actually help that situation.
Mr. Members of the council, Councilwoman Strater, yeah. I think, I think at the minimum, that's what we need to do. We need to at least make it clearer that really what the council is reviewing is reviewing that the city followed the process properly and that there really is other discretion beyond that.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Clerk. When I do receive those appeals, I, you know, in this case, Lieutenant Harper spoke with him. I also in the appeal gave them a long window to withdraw the appeal, told them what the process was, what council's discretion was, and what it meant for their appeal to be in the permanent record. So I did not receive word back that the applicant wanted that appeal canceled before publication. So that's why it went forward. But I have successfully, hate to say talked people out of, but have successfully communicated what the role of council is in that and had people withdraw their appeal or their requests for appeal.
Council, anything else on this topic? All right. The next item up is item 12, which is request for time extension to sign development agreement for Woodrose Apartments. Mr. Nary, do you have any clean off on this one as well before we ask Ms. Anderson to come up?
Yes, Mr. Members of the council. So if you recall, on the Woodrose Apartments, there is a development agreement and we have a timeline for a development agreement to be signed. And an extension can be granted to extend the time of that. And so the time had expired. Ms. Anderson hadn't requested the appeal or the extension by that. And planning felt very confined on simply allowing it. So I spoke with Ms. Anderson a couple of times and she's talked to Caleb as well. And we felt that because this, this is such a project that we really feel is value-added to the city as a general whole. And that because we were looking at some other means and moving, keeping this project moving forward, the idea of them starting over, paying fees all over again, doing the same thing just to renew their development agreement, felt there is discretion for the council to grant that, that you have the ability to allow an extension now if the cause, if you believe in the reason for the lack of timeliness and that there is a time certain we can get this accomplished, because I know there's a lot of moving parts. So that was the reason it's here, is you do have discretion to grant this if you wish. And that, because the other option is that they then reapply, resubmit, renotice, re-public hearings, pay the new fees. And so we're kind of back to square one. And we felt maybe that if we didn't have to go there, we'd see if the council was of the mind to do this.
Thank you. Aaron, would you like to come forward? And you can say your name and address for the record. Either one.
Hello. Erin Anderson, 2238 North Estairway, Marion. Thank you very much, Mayor and council members, for considering my request for an extension on behalf of Woodrose Apartments on the development agreement. As you may recall, we were waiting to sign the development agreement because we do not own the property. We can't purchase the property due to federal funding involved in the project. We couldn't purchase the property until we completed a HUD environmental review. A HUD environmental review is a rather complicated and somewhat time-consuming process. And so that started in March and we submitted, they had their findings and they submitted it officially to HUD on September 18th. And then HUD has about 30 days to review it. So we're expecting that we'll actually hear back in the next week or so. At that point in time, we plan on closing on the purchase of the property by the end of the month, by the end of October. Our purchase agreement expires on November 1st. So that's the plan. Due to the income restrictions, the income restrictions in the development agreement on the affordability requirements, we just couldn't see a way to have the current owner sign that, because it's really, it's the Affordable Housing Development Agreement. And so I had initiated a development agreement extension request a couple of times and then failed to get the final application in in time. It would have been, it would have needed to be submitted by mid-August, I think August 15th. And so here I am, asking if there's a way we could get an extension so we don't have to just go through the whole process again. I'm also here to ask a question. As you may also recall, we changed the project a little bit. The last time I was here, I mentioned we reduced the unit count. So it went from 56 or 52 units to 46 units. We've eliminated one building. And so I wanted to ask also if that's something that needs to be modified in the development agreement as well. So two things, the request for the extension and then the second thing being asking about the, how that works with the change in the, slight change in the scope in the project. Thanks.
Thank you. Council questions or Mr. Nary comment to the second item?
I guess it's the first I've heard of that, though I'm not totally sure how significant the change is and whether or not that still would be eligible under the way it's currently drafted. So I'd have to talk to the planning staff about that and whether or not an amendment to the DA is going to be necessary. But I think we'll have to, we'll have to figure that part out separate and apart from this extension.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
How long was the requested extension?
Well, if things go as I'm hoping they do, we would really only need the extension through the end of this month. And it, and if I find out anything different from this HUD environmental review, I guess that's the only thing we haven't heard back from them. But we should know in the next week or two on that front. I guess, you know, I guess to allow for any potential problems with that, we could ask for two or three months, something like that. I don't know. I doubt, because usually before the HUD environmental view is even submitted, any issues are identified. And they didn't identify any issues. So I'm really hopeful that when it comes back, it'll just be approved and we'll be fine and be able to go ahead and purchase the property.
Mr. Mayor. Sorry, Mr. Mayor. Where's the council? Aaron? I think the question we would need is when would housing authority feel comfortable enough to that they are the owner of the property? Because that's really what's necessary for the owner to sign the development agreement. So that's probably not three weeks, is my guess. But that's, that's what I think we really need is whatever outside number of that, of when that event occurs that they're, they own the property to be able to sign this. I don't know if that's 90 days or more. I just don't know. That's what I think the date we're looking for.
Yeah. Well, at this point, we're anticipating that would be no more than 30 days from now. So, you know, by the first week of November is what we're planning on.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
I was thinking end of the year type. I mean, closings get bumped. Meetings have to happen to get authority to then sign DAs and it's the holidays and, good lord, it's a mess. So I think you've made a good presentation and explanation behind a DA extension, having it relatively soon. But even if it's end of the year, put some urgency on those folks to act when it's time to act. It still gives a little flexibility for groups to meet. And so.
Yeah.
End of the year would be my preference.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to that effect to direct that or?
I'm sorry, sir. I didn't.
Well, we've got a, we've got a party over here that's asking for end of the year to, and I'm saying if someone wants to put that in a motion form at this point in time or more discussion on the topic. Councilman Borton.
Light of the record and presentation, I move that we grant the request and make the application work. The request for the time extension to sign the development agreement for Woodrose Apartments through the end of the calendar year of 2022.
Second.
I have a motion of second to extend this to the end of the year. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perro.
I just want to say congratulations on getting the 9% tax credit and how competitive that was this year and all the work that you put into that and sticking it out. Because I know that it felt like that the, the process was going to fall apart numerous occasions. So congratulations on having this all come together and being able to see the light at the end of the tunnel.
Thanks. I think my mic's off, but maybe it's not now. Thank you. And, and all of you played a part in, in that success. I'm sure the support from the city was, was critical to, to the success. And so I thank you all very much. Thank you for mentioning that. I meant to have a moment to celebrate that fact as well. We are technically still in the appeal process. The applicants, any applicants that did not get selected have an opportunity. We're still in a window where they can appeal. And so the official notices haven't gone out, but it's, it's really exciting.
Are there further discussion on the motion? Okay. If not, court color roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Strater.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Aye.
Cavanagh.
Horton. Aye.
Four ayes, one no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council, we've reached the end of our agenda. Do I have motion to adjourn? Councilman Borton. Motion to adjourn, all in favor, say five by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. The ayes have it. We are adjourned. Post nay. The ayes have it. We are adjourned.
Item H two two, two oh two two dash zero zero six seven, is there any discussion? If not, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Strater.
Hi.
Councilman Burnt. Councilwoman Perro. Councilman Cavanagh.
Here.
Councilman Borton. Mayor Simison.
Here. Next time it's the Pledge of Allegiance, if you'd all please rise and join us in the pledge. Next up will be the community invocation, which will be delivered by Pastor Vinnie Hanke. If you would please join us, the invocation, or take this as a moment of silence and reflection.
Mayor, members of the city council, thank you again for the opportunity to pray for you as you begin your meeting. God ask just humbly and simply for wisdom for the city council members. I thank you for their leadership. God, I thank you for the way they model what a citizen means to be in a city to us. I pray that they go about their business, that they would listen well, speak well, and serve well. And that God meridian would be a city that would reflect your glory and good, that you would help its citizens to be neighbors to one another, and to live with kindness and charity in our hearts. We thank you for the changing of the season, the passing of time, how it reminds us of your grace and its ability to carry us through the day. And so we ask, as we get close to concluding this day, that you might be present now. It's through Christ that I pray. Amen. And if I may, I'm Mr. Mayor, kudos on the podcast, by the way. Very much enjoyed it.
Thank you, appreciate it, Vinnie. Yeah, I learned everything I learned from, was from you, so. The council member.
One follower.
It's all it takes. It's like, it looks like a butterfly that starts a hurricane, so. Excellent. All right, next item up is adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
That we approve the agenda as published.
Have a motion second to prove the agenda is published, is there any discussion? If not, on favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, aye. Guys have it, and the agenda is adopted. Mr. Clark, we have anyone set up under public forum?
Mr. Mayor, we did not.
Okay. Then with that, we will move on to item one this evening, which will be a public hearing for fifty-one sixty-five West Highland Fall Drive H twenty-two zero zero six seven. We'll open this public hearing with staff comments.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The first and only application before you tonight is a request for vacation and easement. This site is generally located northwest of West Tindham Boulevard and North Black Cat Road at five-one-five-six West Highland Fall Drive. This property was platted as lot six, block three, Fairborn subdivision number three. The applicant requests approval to vacate a thirty-five foot long by two foot wide portion of the ten foot wide pressure irrigation easement along the west side of lot six, block three, Fairborn subdivision number three. The reason for the request is that a portion of the home under construction on the subject lot encroaches two feet into the easement area. The applicant's narrative states the irrigation easement is for ongoing operations and maintenance of a six inch diameter pipeline. The line was installed four feet from the west property line on the lot, reducing the easement width to eight feet, where the home encroaches will still allow adequate space for operating and maintaining the pipeline. A relinquishment letter was received from Sam Johnson, president of the Fairborn Subdivision Owners Association, stating they have no objection to the partial vacation of the pressure irrigation easement as proposed. A letter was also received from Settlers Irrigation District stating that they do not own or operate the pressure irrigation system for Fairborn subdivision. Staff is recommending approval, and there was no written testimony submitted on this application. Staff will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Sonya, council any questions for staff? Okay. I don't see anyone that would be qualified as the applicant in the room or online. To your knowledge, Sonya, were they planning on attending this evening?
I am unsure if they were or not. Chris mentioned there might be someone online, but, okay, no, thank you.
So council, the applicant is not here. Mr. Clark, do we have anyone sign up to testify this item?
On this, we have one sign up, it didn't indicate they wish to testify, and I apologize if I pronounced the name wrong, Jeff Reedy, Reedy? Is there a Jeff here? Okay, there was somebody signed in, but they're no longer here.
Okay. Council, what direction would you like to go? Would you like to continue this item until the applicant can be here? Was the public hearing with no comments from the applicant or the one person who signed up?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Berman.
Normally, this is really weird, I think it's happened, you know, maybe a couple of times within the past. Only show up to testify in support of their application. Again, this is, this last time, pretty straightforward. I, I wouldn't have any questions with the applicant if they were here, so I'm okay. Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Ben Cavanagh.
I fall in the same place, I'm pretty much a stickler, if the applicant's not here, I don't feel like to hear the application. Administrative, everything to be covered is covered in the application and the narrative, so I, I don't have any hesitation with moving forward, but also appreciate if we wanted to hear from the applicant. Councilmember Burnt, I don't have any questions, I'd ask.
Okay. And with that, do I have either motions to close the public hearing or another motion? I don't think we're getting any further with anybody else in the room talking. Have motion second to close the public hearing, on favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye. Guys have it, and the public hearing is closed.
Mayor.
Councilman Berman.
I move that we approve item number H dash two zero two two dash zero zero six seven.
Second.
Have a motion second to approve item H two two, two oh two two dash zero zero six seven. Is there any discussion? If not, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Strater.
Hi.
Burnt.
Hi.
Perro.
Hi.
Cavanagh.
Hi.
Borton.
Hi.
All eyes, motion carries, the item is agreed to. Anything under future meeting topics?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Strater.
I do have a potential future meeting topic. But before I took too much of the parks department's time, I wanted to see if other council members would be interested in discussing the topic. What I'm curious about would be an overview on what pesticides and herbicides we use in our public parks, how often we apply them. And then I think recently Boise actually approved a pilot and then made some changes to move away from using some of those chemicals in their parks. So I'd be interested in hearing more about that, other cities, how they're approaching it. And ultimately, maybe even the Parks Commission would be a good place to take this up, but that's a topic that I'm interested in exploring and didn't want to use too many resources unless others are interested.
Anything else under future meeting topics? All right, then I have a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Strater.
Move that we adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, on favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye. Guys have it, we are adjourned.